Call to order the Special Ed and Alternative Ed and Early Childhood Subcommittee. Can you please call the roll?
Ms. Dragia?
Here.
Ms. Parara?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Stand for salute to the flag.
Sarah's here.
Uh, please believe.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Pressman said in the open meeting law, any pressman make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do we have any citizen input?
We do not.
So we'll move right on to three point oh one, discussion and vote to refer. I wanna thank everybody for, we postponed a few days from the last meeting, so we're meeting a couple times in a row. But we'll turn it over to the superintendent or Dr. B, whoever you want to.
Dr. B. Um, so as you know, we brought the attendance policy to the policy subcommittee at the end of August to be able to have it on the August school committee agenda. Um, as we shared out uh the policy, it stayed status quo. It was not a new policy, everything about the policy was forwarded the same. Some of the changes that were made were more, if you remember, in relationship to getting out some of the extra language that made the policy hard to understand and really getting to the nuts and bolts of what the policy was stating as far as what students will do and what we will do as a school. Um, when that policy went, was beginning to be utilized and leveraged and we were getting to the point of early October, cause if you remember, this was on the agenda for a couple weeks back. That was right as we were getting to the place of preparing for progress reports at our secondary schools for the term. Um, and when the policy was further examined deeper, specifically speaking to the D four policy, um, the, the high school staff and the middle school staff specifically came forward requesting uh that we take a look at daily attendance versus class attendance. In speaking with the secondary folks, they felt as though class attendance is more related to discipline for kids cutting class and skipping class and that they were navigating, supporting those students and looking at those students um separately and working with those students and their families as a disciplined place. But when we think about daily attendance to be the focus for the policy as it relates to kids earning the sixty-four, we feel as though we have a very good handle on daily attendance, more so now than we have in the last few years with all of the monitors that are assigned to daily attendance, the support staff at our secondary schools cycling around and supporting with the buyback policy. Um, when we start getting into class attendance, it becomes a much different ask of our support staff. Um, some classes meet three times a week, some places, classes meet twice a week. And so to start getting to the nitty gritty, um, as far as that goes with the attendance policy, our hope was to change the overall language simply to read daily versus class. Um, just so that you know, I did pull some data um of our secondary school, particularly up at the high schools where we know class cuts would happen more regularly um as opposed to the middle school where it can be tracked with more fluidity over the course of a day because when a student's missing from the class, everybody in the class knows, you know, Bobby's not here today. Or Bobby is here, where is he? And they kinda out them, out the kids themselves as they're trying to skip class. The high school, as we know, because classes are not co-horted, it's different kids in every class. So tracking the class cuts looks different and particularly looks different when we're talking about tracking grades. Um, we continue to sup- require teachers to post class attendance. For some teachers, it still becomes a challenge and so navigating all aspects of class attendance just becomes a different beast when we're talking about assigning a grade lower than what the student earned as a result of class attendance. So, as we look at the freshmen, you know, just right now, we've got seventy-three freshmen at the high school who for first term have had a class cut. But when we look at the number of kids that have had more than two class cuts, it feels very manageable in the sense of discipline feels as though it's being rendered. Uh, you don't see repeated class cuts based on what I was able to pull right out of the system. Are there kids cutting class? Yes. But does it look as though, based on the data, that for the kids who have cut class, it feels as though it's being addressed because it's one-off situations? There are some kids where it becomes a little bit of a pattern, but even those patterns do not feel overwhelmingly excessive at this point. Um, as it relates to class cuts currently, cause I do believe that was something that was brought up when we first entered into this discussion.
Yeah. How many disciplines have there been at the high school for class cuts?
Well, I have, as of right now, it looks as though there have been, for term one year to date right now, there have been five hundred and forty-one class cuts entered.
And what was the discipline? What is the, like, I'm assuming it.
The consequence.
Consequence and then, you know.
So I, I didn't look to see how it was being disciplined. So this particular report is the incident report. So I pulled the incidents which are class cut. I did not pull the actions to class cut. But I can pull the actions, I just don't have that in, right in front of me. I was more looking to see how often is class cutting happening? Um, and if it's happening repeatedly for the same kids, for me, that would send a message, we're doing nothing about it. Right? If a kid cuts a cla- if a student cuts a class and it becomes a one-off experience, it would lead me to say, there was an intervention, a conversation, an expectation, and the behavior changed. For some kids, the behavior has not changed. But even those numbers of multiple class cuts beyond two, I'd have to pull it explicitly, but it's, it's not rampant, it's not.
Does it have, how many have three? How many have four, five? Like?
It does, I just have to, I just would have to look at it to that depth.
The reason why I'm saying this, because as you're talking, like, the, the class, as I read here, you know, class attendance and cutting classes are disciplinary response. If we're not checking with fidelity class attendance, then this is Nolan Foyt, because if I happen to be in her class and she checks the attendance and I cut, I get dinged. If I happen to be in his class and he doesn't, I get away. Like, that's where I was trying to, you know.
We're not looking to not take attendance in a class. We're saying it should factor into the D four, right? There, we're still expecting that teachers are gonna be, what Amy, Dr. B's saying is that um, class attendance is being um addressed, but it's being addressed at the teacher and administrative level as a const- as a disciplinary issue. But we us, we're not advocating for class attendance not to be taken.
I mean, it's the basic expectation, I would think, that every class is, you take attendance at every class. I'd be curious to see what that report shows. So if we have a hundred classes, how many, are they actually taking the attendance? Because I see it as a basic, you know, you're running a class, that's the first step, you take attendance. If we can't figure out that everybody with fidelity is taking attendance and know who's in your class or missing in your class, we got bigger problems than curriculum or anything else, so.
I completely agree. I, I also just know from experience, um, navigating over two hundred staff every day to make sure that class attendance is taken and following up and catching up on a day-to-day basis is a, is a big job too. And I wanna make sure kids are not getting penalized at the class level because someone is or it, like, you happen to be the, with the teacher that takes class attendance at every class and then another student happens to be with a teacher who maybe doesn't take attendance. We can monitor daily and through monitoring daily, you can see classes that were and were not. We can also run reports to go back and hold teachers accountable for that class attendance.
I have a question. So what's the process now for taking, I'm a teacher in the classroom, what is my process for taking attendance?
The expectation is that, that is the way that you start your class.
Is it on a piece of paper that I submit to you?
On the computer.
On the computer. Right, that's what I figured, cause I mean, I used to teach not too long ago, I figured if I was doing. So if I didn't put my attendance in immediately, not immediately, but the principal could look up and see what teacher wasn't, didn't put attendance in, correct? So could we do that maybe on a principal, just to me, is it a concern that teachers not taking attendance?
I don't, I haven't seen.
Not directly, I don't think.
I haven't seen the data, but I'd be curious to see what the data shows, so I would agree with you. If we ask for the data and it shows we have two hundred teachers and only a hundred and fifty of them are taking with fidelity attendance every day, I think that's a problem.
Uh, no kidding.
Until we get the data, I don't wanna pass judgment on what's happening.
Absolutely. Well, I would imagine it's being done, but again, you don't know.
But we'll wait to see what the data shows. I'm sure when you see it, if it's not good, you're gonna address it between the next times that we talk. But I would like to, I just think it's a basic of, you take attendance first. Let's get the class under control. We gotta know the kids. We gotta know who's in the room. You know, I've heard stories of kids sitting in a classroom for the entire year last year at Derby High School and that, and that wasn't their class. I, I shouldn't have those calls being made to me where, you know, how do I have, like, we know everybody in the room that's here. What if some, you know, what uninvited person was sitting there?
Well, I, okay, so I, I would say to put that out there on camera, that's a concern to me.
Yep.
That we would say, that's, if that happens, then I would say you direct that person to me. Because I, I don't, I, I would say that that's not the, the, what the expectation is, nor it is the norm. So if, if somebody is alluding to that, then refer them to me so we can address it.
Oh, definitely. Absolutely. It definitely.
But to put out there for people to think that there are strangers in classrooms, I think that's, we don't wanna do that.
I would say strangers, strange students. I would say not strangers, I apologize for that language, that when I was reading stranger was to the class. So if you're in, supposed to be in her class and you're not, but you're sitting in my class, it double folds. Now, I don't have, I got the wrong person in, she's got the person that's supposed to be with her but not with her.
But I went to Amy's class, cause I'm friends with Amy, so I wanted to hang out in Amy's class for the day.
Right.
And that I've heard of students doing. Not just in art, to be clear, I have not just heard that in art district, I've heard that in multiple districts.
Well, kids will be kids, right? And I, but I think, and, but I think will be kids certainly, and I, and I, and I'm not, I don't know, I'm not gonna say it doesn't happen cause then I, I don't have testable status, right? However, when I.
Kids do.
Right. When I think about what our asks are, I, here's, I guess, my part. We wanna be able to implement a rigorous attendance policy that holds kids accountable. At the same time, I don't want all of our support staff to turn into clerical aides to navigate period one to period seven all day. We are trying to be, we've also asked a number of our support staff to be present in hallways, make sure the school is safe and unpredictable in all other angles and we wanna make sure that our staff are available for when kids need support and need to be able to speak with their counselors and whatnot. We have tools that very, for, and the other part is this, we're trying to make attendance monitorable for families. We're trying to engage families to say, hey, Johnny's had four absences, they need to be in school. It's very hard to communicate with families, the class attendance as well as the daily attendance for our families to understand what their role is. Get your kids to school, we will communicate everything else after that. And so when we think about the attendance policy and not having it to turn into a clerical chase, I was here on Monday, and again, even when I think about it, the majority of our classes are five days a week in most cases. We will have a few one-offs on the elective side, more specifically for elective credit towards graduation, where the one-offs of the three days and the two-day classes might fall into play. And so for the sake of this, because again, November, the, the first term is ending, we have been tracking daily attendance, we've been getting after daily attendance. I know the counselors up at the high school have been monitoring the buyback policy, getting kids to be present for the five days in a row to buy back time. And so that for us becomes the push. If we have to keep, stick with class to follow the policy, we will. I just don't want more kids to fail certain classes or get the D because it's a class situation that I can't say specifically we have been as intentional about as we have been about daily attendance every day. Again, with the expectation that when you're in school, you're going to all your classes. And based on what I can see from the class cut data, it feels responsive to me that as kids were cutting class, they were respond, they were spoken to, it was addressed and it looks like the patterns changed. Outside of what I would maybe say, if you, you're saying like three times, there might be about twenty-five to thirty kids out of the five hundred something that have had this like multiple class cut scenarios.
How do class cuts figure into um the attendance in terms of, you know, if I show up to school at this time, it's considered an absence, cause maybe I show up at, after lunch or at one o'clock? How do class, how does class attendance figure in? Does it even, or once you're kind of checked in in the morning, you're in school, that means you're in school?
For the day.
Unless you physically leave. So I could be in the bathroom during math, but that doesn't necessarily affect, not that there's anything wrong with that, I'm just asking.
Well, that's where a class cut would come in, because you'd be marked absent from the class because you're in the bathroom.
Yeah.
And then it goes to the office and that.
But it wouldn't be determining like that, can only miss ten percent of attendance for graduation is what I'm trying to say.
Daily attendance.
It's more daily, that's what matters. So then it makes sense to me that that policy reflects daily attendance. For the fact that you're telling me it's easier and I, I certainly think we need to spend more time, I don't want teachers or anybody like you're suggesting doing, doing extra work that's unnecessary. Every teacher should obviously be taking attendance at every class and that should be discussed with the principal and followed up with the parents. Um, but I think it makes sense if this D four policy is supposed to be reflective of making sure we have proper attendance for graduation, then it makes sense to me that it goes by daily attendance. And if you think that makes sense and that would be um easier for it to be, you know, correct and efficient, then. Well, I, I wanna make it clear, under no circumstances are we saying that we are not going to take classes tonight.
Oh, of course, yeah, absolutely. We, all we're saying is for the D four purpose, we want daily attendance to count towards that.
Right. To collect it, to get the data. Gotcha.
But we still expect teachers, that, that's disturbing to me. I'm gonna check that out, throw it in here, I'm gonna check that out firstly.
Of course. Of course we have, of course. And I, I would, I would assume ninety-nine percent of the teachers are doing it. It's one of the first things you do when you teach a class, right?
We're gonna make sure, we're gonna make sure and put the word out there, we expect it to happen, absolutely.
But let's make sure, absolutely, yeah.
If somebody's out half the day, if they come in like once a day, get blocked absent, right?
Correct, yes, yes.
There'd be that more than half the day.
You gotta be there for the half the day, right?
So they come up, if they come in at noon, yeah, like they.
So that's what I was wondering, like, if I come in at eight, Kevin, though, and I only go to math class and then I spend the rest of the day walking around, hanging out, and then maybe I go to class at the end of the day, I still get attendance for that full day, correct?
But that's what, yes, daily attendance, yes, but you're gonna have about four class cuts and that's where it's with current, correct?
Okay. Yes. Oh, you're gonna have issues that you're gonna have to have issues that you have to take care of, absolutely. But I'm talking about just whatever graduation requirements are, I guess, my mind is going back to that.
And really our chronic absenteeism, which is part of accountability.
That would be, yeah.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
I see them as two separate conversations. It's, we're having a class conversation and then we're having a D four conversation. And I think I've stated my, my feelings about D four. I, I have issues, I feel like until we address some of the systemic things related to getting kids to school, I have a hard time with it. But in terms of class cuts and attendance for specific classes, I think that absolutely needs to be monitored at the school level. That makes sense to me. I mean, I don't think that needs to be factored in, yeah, any of that.
Yeah, okay.
When that, when this policy was created, I've been here for a while, so that's part of the reason why I was hesitant because I wasn't necessarily in favor of things and then I was talked into, give us a chance, this is the policy that, at the high school, at least. We wanted to do this, we've checked it, we've done, I've sat here and listened to this over several years. So part of the reason why I just don't say, yeah, it makes sense is because of that. So at that time, but at that time, we, we, we would say, what happens when there's a, a situation, you know, that happens?
No, it's okay, question, it's a good question.
And I believe that there was a um, like a, not a waiver, but some sort of.
Principal discretion.
The counselor comes in and says, wait a minute, wait a minute, Kyle didn't, like, he had other stuff going on, let's sit down and talk about this separate from the, how, whoever monitors the numbers. So then we'd say, well, what's going on with Kyle, this, that, whatever, we would try to figure it out.
Yep.
It wasn't just a blatant, like, boom.
That's right.
Well, and, and I wanna be clear, in the policy, it does read that.
It does read that, but my concern is that it doesn't always play out that way. So even though it reads that way, I've worked with kids where that hasn't happened, where they've gotten a sixty-four in a class and there have been folks that have known that other things were going on and they haven't been advocated for. So until I think we have those systems in place, that's where my issue with making sure that we're, we're we're making sure that those systems are in place to advocate and make sure that folks know that it's, there are certain circumstances that we're not. If a kid is just not blatantly coming to school and all these other things are in place to support them coming to school, then, okay, fine, then we implement said D four policy. But if there are other things that we have not yet addressed and we have not sat down to say, hey, what's going on? How can we support? Then I don't think that we can do that. And what I'm saying is I don't think that's been, I know that has not been implemented consistently throughout the years.
I would agree with you a hundred percent. And I would also say that one thing that is very different this year than in years past is that we have never invested in the number of people that have their hands in attendance across every school. So with the new approach to attendance this year, with having attendance monitors in every building, I'm, to this point, I am still working with some schools that have struggled to get the full system up and running at the elementary level specifically. So we are still working with those few schools that have needed the extra last push to get things up and running. But for the majority, especially across our secondary schools, I can speak to where this is really in effect, our middle schools and the high school have, I mean, the high school itself, just to speak to the high school, has about thirty-five to forty attendance monitors that are attending to attendance to learn the stories about kids. It's not just a clerk or an office parent that are just making random, it is a personalized experience. We are learning the stories of what's getting in the way because the caseloads are manageable. Um, and then we've got Jess Stevens leading the charge. We've got attendance officers that are also meeting with every single attendance off, attendance monitor in the building. So that not only is it the attendance monitor, but they also have the attendance officer meeting with them every single week. And when cases come up with kids that are struggling to get in or the patterns are still, I was just on the phone with the principal upstairs before I came down, right? Patterns of attendance, they're not changing and getting involved in the conversation with the families. So I just feel that we are in a much better place than ever before to attend to your concerns that, that you bring up, uh, Sarah and feel confident that the systems are in place. Holding teachers accountable will always be a piece to the work, but we also gotta support teachers in that piece too. We have a bunch of brand-new teachers to this work, they've got new things coming at them all day. Do I think they, do I think they choose not to take intentionally? No, I think they get overwhelmed in the moment, they get up, they wanna get their lesson going, they know they might have a group they gotta get to and boom, before you know it, fifty minutes disappears and I didn't take attendance for that day. Do I think it is, I'm just not taking attendance? I absolutely don't think that at all. Um, however, when we're talking about a policy that's gonna affect kids' grades, we wanna make sure we get it right the first time cause I don't want parents angry because they weren't communicated with in, in the fallback of what that happens. And again, I just don't want our support staff, who are the bulk of the folks leading this work across our schools, to get caught up in a clerical place navigating the class piece and then chasing the teacher who didn't post it. It just feels to me like a lot of time that might not be the time we necessarily want folks in on it.
I'd like to get data as well, cause this, this isn't a new po, this is the same policy as last year. Like, for the last year too, what did it look like? How many students uh received a D four? What happened? Because I'm still having a hard time with it in that I don't understand. Part of me says that if we kept the policy as is, it's gonna make it clearer for us to identify the kids that are having an issue. And then how we handle that issue is the, is the real, how do we either figure out what's happening? Ms. Rogers says that there's kids, students that come and we're not addressing the needs that, whatever they're doing. To me, that's a problem administratively. So the way I was reading this is that it would bubble those kids up that get a D four to put them on, to make it easier rather than more difficult. So not all of the kids that have three, four absences around the thing. And then we sit around and talk about it with all of our support staff and we say, yeah, Maria's got this, Amy had that. I thought this policy was made for us to identify and then therefore support those kids.
Well, but for instance, right, so as another example, if I am a student that's struggling second period, I had an argument with my mom, first period I come in, I navigate first period, I'm having, I need to go talk to my counselor. So I go second period to talk to my counselor. The student's accounted for. The class will put her in as an absence or him in as an absence for that class. However, we know where the student was. They were getting their mental health needs, navigating whatever might be going on for that kid to miss class for the time. This policy would force us to go back and double-check and triple-check that class absence, right? That's not, that's a legitimate class absence. That class absence for a student that's with the clerk, nurse or is with.
I would say that's an excuse absence, though. Why wouldn't we put that excuse in? It wouldn't fall under this policy.
Well, the teacher wouldn't know it was an excused absence.
It would be after, you'd go in there and code it.
We'd have to go in there and decode it and all that jazz, right? So there's a lot of dou, there's a lot of parts to all pieces of it when it's related to class attendance. And understanding and knowing where every single kid is for each individual class attendance piece, um, related to, I wanna make sure that nothing gets missed across those, those concerts and those conversations as well. So there's a lot of intricate pieces, I just feel, that need to talk to one another, that might not with automaticity in the moment of a grade for, the grades for the kids. So knowing how we are monitoring, like I said, the class attendance, knowing the numbers of reasons that kids may or may not be present, the variables that just become another tracking piece. I mean, we can certainly, you know, you could argue both ways. But at the end of the day, I feel as though we have a handle on the daily, the class we will continue to work on with every student, with every teacher. Um, but knowing the immediacy with which we need to have information to get kids on buyback, get kids connected to the buyback, know when you've been absent too many times, buyback is no longer an option, right? I just wanna make sure that those are the data points that are in front of us every single day and not just in front of one person, but in front of a number of people that are doing the work up at the high school. Um, and so we would have to really rethink like how we get after the class attendance piece um, as it relates to assigning the D four. Right now, we have a very good handle on it, we've had a handle on it all term, which was why we were bringing this forward a couple weeks back before the, the mid-marking period occurred. Um, because we didn't wanna get to the very end of the term.
So can I make a suggestion? So if we make a motion to refer this to the committee to change the wording to daily attendance, and I understand I'm hearing concerns about the policy in general, which I think could be taken up in the policy subcommittee.
I think those are, yeah, I think it's two separate, we can get for now and then we have a bigger discussion.
Right, it's two separate things, exactly. So I don't know who's on policy, but I'm sure we can figure that out and work on that. I think the intention, as I think everybody here probably, I don't know, but I think obviously the intention um, of this, of the D four policy is to be proactive, it's not to be punitive. But we wanna make sure that that's, you know, what's happening. Um, so I think seeing the data maybe in a policy subcommittee meeting so that those guys can kinda look into that. Because if it's not working, then why are we doing it, right? And if it is working, then yes, we absolutely should continue. So I think looking at that would probably alleviate people. Um, but I think as far as this change, I think, can we just motion to refer?
Motion made to refer?
Second.
Any questions?
So I just wanna make a comment that, so I'm
Yeah, we can make comments and questions.
Very comfortable with moving this piece. And in addition to that, and again, my comfortability means absolutely nothing. Um, but I do think it's important that we have a very, a, a much bigger conversation about what this looks like cause I can appreciate that we have more hands on deck looking at attendance. But this has been a policy that's been in place forever, that's really never been implemented with any kind of fidelity. Like, the way you just explained it is different, is, is how I would have envisioned it, right? It would have caused these kids to kinda bubble up to needing intervention at that point, but how it reads is very punitive. You missed four days, immediately it's a sixty-four, now we're gonna get these kids in a buyback, but how are we gonna get them invested? It's a whole bigger conversation. So I think having that conversation about what that looks like, how is it working this year now that we're actually trying to implement it with some kind of fidelity? Now that we've got all these people in place, I think just having that discussion with, um, with all of the information that we have now with some data to back it up, I think that it might look like, oh, you know what? Yeah, this was, this seemed like a good idea and yeah, it's working, but I got a better idea. This might work better, right? You might look at it all and say, hey, now I've got something, this is kind of working as a good foundation, but I've got something better to put in place now. Or it might be, you know what, this isn't working the way that we envisioned it and let's scrap it. So again, I'm a big fan of let's see how it goes now that we actually have people that are implementing it and then reconsider.
Or maintain, or, or maintain, right, or maintain.
Maintain, but maintain, reconsider in terms of like still getting.
Cause I just wanna say too, right, like, I, I was at the high school when we did not have an attendance policy, where there was no stake in it for kids.
Yeah.
And I just wanna remind everybody of how poor attendance was. And again, this goes back, this, this policy's been in play now for, I mean, pri- prior to, prior, even before prior to, but it was there when we were there.
Yeah. Practical.
Yeah.
When I was there.
When we were there, it was there. So this policy, I'd have to guess is over easily eight years old, easily over eight years.
Yeah. I mean, I shouldn't say we, I should say, I'd like to see the data, so I'm comfortable. I'm, I'm actually quite fine with the policy the way it is. I'm a little bit different in the way, maybe I see it or approach it. But if it comes back when we get this data and what some of my colleagues are saying is the, is, is the case and this is happening at a consistent level and we're hurting more kids and we're helping kids, well, and that becomes a huge problem, right? So I would, I think so far, from what I've heard from teachers and principals, it seems to be working. But it would be nice to see that information. And I think something, this could be the, whoever is the head of policy, have them have a subcommittee meeting, get that information, those few people can.
Can I refer from the words a second?
Can we refer?
The full, no, the full committee.
No, we can't, we wanna do that first, yeah.
The full committee, yeah, the full committee on, on that Monday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I said, I, I have a.
I'm saying a side note, we don't, yeah.
Yeah, no, but she's this part first.
Oh, okay.
I said, I'm policy as well.
And get, yeah. Oh, okay, of course.
That's probably why I've heard about this a little more than some of the others. And so just a couple of my concerns. One is, we, what I've heard here is, we have an existing policy since September that we haven't followed as administrators. Because.
No, we have. That's why, we've been following you.
We've been following, we've been following, we wanna change the language moving forward, yeah. We've been following the old language, we wanna change the language.
Which is, so then we should know how many kids have it before.
We wanna know.
None.
Well, the term's not over yet, but we will know once the term's over. We don't know yet, cause the term's not.
And we also know, I could also run a report, we do know who the kids were that had four absences per class. There's a report that Brian shared with us, we do know. So we can pull the number of kids who would have gotten, who would have gotten a D four as a result of class and how many classes would have been affected versus the number of kids that are gonna get a D four as a result of daily. In addition to that, I believe there is also a way that we can view the number of principal discretion that have been given off because, or presented, because if you have higher absences and you did not get a D four, then that's the principal discretion stepping in.
Right. So I guess, I'm totally fine with referring. I don't want it to go another policy, like, I want it to be fixed now. And part of fixing it is giving us the information. So before, like, is it being followed with fidelity? How many, what kids was it? How many discretion was it? Have we ever looked at the discretion? Are the discretion's a joke? Are the discretion's legit? Whatever, so. Have we ever looked at the discretion, are the discretion a joke, are the discretion legit, whatever, so. Looking at, before we say let's just scrap this, I would rather get all of that backup for the full committee. So now, we sit there, we say, we did all of this, we turned over everything, we figured it out, this is what would happen here and there, whatever. I'd feel more comfortable voting on it than if we get further information, because it uh. Uh, like I said, the other piece I think the full committee should get is the copies of the minutes of any meeting for the last ten years. That says, and we shouldn't have to go search for this, that talks about the D four or the D six policy. So I come at it from a uh experience, I've been around longer than some members. We need to provide for the other members the context of how did we get here? So when I say, sometimes I feel like a broken record, well, I was here a little while, I heard this before, I hear. Show it to us in the minutes of the meetings, when Mr. Damaris came before us to say, here's why I think we need this policy. Here's who my support staff was, I'd also like to have a report of what does this staff look like at the high school? Ten years ago versus now. Because what I've done is sat here, meeting after meeting and said, millions of dollars, yep, we're gonna add more, we're gonna add more, we're gonna add more. We wanna see results, right? Principal looks across, yep, yep, yep. We've had this discussion how many times, and the people are gonna really be shocked. When they see how much money spent on administration at that high school now versus then, no, there's needs. We went from four adjustment councils or three to twelve, like, there's needs for all of this stuff. But I think context wise for all of us would help to say, here's what we have, and granted, there's more kids. So I I just think all of that would help me give you a positive one.
So that was the other question on my list was to have some comparative data, so what did that look like? Not pre, not twenty twenty, I don't wanna look at any of those numbers, but, you know, prior to this. What did those attendance numbers look like prior to these things being put in place? That was on my list of questions.
So I would say if we refer this, anybody has any further questions between now and the meeting for data or information? That would help the committee, email the superintendent so we can have that make sense?
Yes.
So a motion been made and seconded, roll call?
Ms. Agnew?
Yes.
Ms. Parara?
Yes.
Ms. Robert, yes.
Thank you, three point zero two, an update on S E L initiatives.
So we just wanted to take an opportunity um to highlight. Some of the S E L work that we've been leading in the district. Um, I listed, I shared with everybody a list of the bullets, you know, Claudia has been leading this work over the last few years as it relates. Um, to curriculum and and rollouts across schools. Just as a as a refresher for folks, you know, last year we invested in the leadership curriculum. Um, and that has been rolled out across all of our secondary schools through advisory. Um, and we are into our second year of rollout this year, um, I'm not sure if there's anything.
Not only in advisory, but part of that programming as well too, that we purchased was um, her story. For to mentors, empowering of standards, to be able to um. Groups for kiddos that need that extra support as well too, which was made possible through that leadership program, so we purchased other programings. Within, not just an advisory, but small group support too.
So that is up and running across our secondary schools, when we look at our elementary, um. If we really wanna be honest, we don't have a tier one elementary curriculum. Um, our elementary schools, you know, kind of, you know, we we adopted choose love. Um, that was rolled out with some fidelity before covid, and then since then, it's kinda sprinkled off. Um, folks have kinda fallen out of love with it, no pun intended. Um, but really looking and feeling as though that our kids and our staff just need something more. Um, and really, when we think about curriculum at the elementary level, is really thinking about like a bank and a variety of lessons. That teachers can ebb and flow in and out of to meet the needs of the kids that they are working with over the scope of a school year. Um, we will be running um some exploratory groups this year to take a look at positive action and second steps. Which are two curriculums that some of our schools have used, some schools have not. Um, so we will be looking at those two in particular. As we move forward into this year to hopefully make a recommendation for purchase coming into the end of the year. Um, if not even sooner than that, so more to come on that. Um, as it relates to S E L screeners. Um, and curriculum exploration, we will be taking a large chunk of the November seventh professional development day. Uh, where the majority of our S E L support staff, we've been working with four. Different S E L screeners, and each of them come with a different bank of resources attached to them. Um, and so looking at Saber, Satchel, Panorama, and Desa. Um, we will be going through essentially an exploratory on November seventh. Um, hoping that some schools will look to pilot the work so that we can make an educated decision based on what our folks. Have used, have tried with our kids and have put into practice with our kids. Um, and then to make sure that, again, the toolbox is deep enough and broad enough so that. Teachers can use the scope of the lessons, but then also have opportunities to reach into the curriculum toolbox as needed. Depending upon what they're navigating with their students. Um, so that will, and that's again, to feed into and support our support staff that are running small groups. You know, we're really trying to ensure that our kids are getting small group opportunities. However, as a district, we have not invested in the materials that go into the small groups. So many of our Sacks and Adjust, Adjustment Council is S E L liaisons, behavior therapists and guidance counselors. Are pulling from their own tools and toolboxes, and some of the resources that we've been able to provide that were more free resources. But we're looking to be all on the same page, so we'll be coming back again with a recommendation and lever, looking to leverage some of our mental health grant funds. To help offset the cost for some of that curriculum moving into this year. Any question about that part?
Questions, Ms. Rogers?
So just a comment about the screeners, so I was just thinking about those afterwards, so. You know what the screeners were looking at, the data that'll come out of that, like what kids are hitting certain competencies. Just wanna be really careful about only using that data to identify who needs what. Because a lot of kids will be able to answer those questions and it'll look like kids have certain competency levels, and then in reality, they don't. So I just wanna be careful about that, so I don't wanna become over reliant on that, those screening tools. And I know that our Sacks are really good at that, but I just need to look that up there.
It's not looking at where our kids struggling, it's where can we, where can we do better at some of our lessons? Um, is what we're looking to do with it, with a lot of that data too.
So I'd love to see those screeners sort of inform just what we do for tier one, right? So if we've got a boatload of kids that are really struggling, say, in the area of self-awareness, then we know. That a lot of our tier one initiatives need to focus on self-awareness, lord knows they struggle in self-awareness, especially at the elementary level, right? So that's, that that was the only thing I was thinking about as I was kind of looking over some of this stuff, is just to be really careful about not. Looking at that data as the end all be all for how we signal out kids to be participate in groups or things like that.
Yeah, and I and I would, I agree, and I would say, you know, we're also investing in edge climber. Which becomes another way for us to triangulate data, um, so that we're not just relying on any one single data point to be the driver of all of our focus. That being said, when we recognize kids that need skill development in a few areas, how we can leverage this data to help us identify those kids.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and especially for us, it's also about recognizing the kids that don't display outwardly what's going on, right? There's many of our kids are introverts and need support, is those the quiet ones that we worry about, right? Who are our kids that may not be outwardly responding? Um, because those are the kids that come to everyone's attention first, and so we wanna make sure that all kids are identified. Across all of the S E L competencies, so that we're supporting all kids.
I say consistently, I'm not worried about little Johnny, whose behaviors are off, off, you know. They're off the, his rocker, right, so we're kind of falling apart all over the place, because there are all eyes on little Johnny. But there aren't eyes on little Sally, who's really quiet and may look like she's kinda put together, but in reality, this kid's falling apart.
Yep. And again, keeping in mind, like, we're coming from a place, we have never had this data in this district, right? We have never been able to identify a screener district wide, we've never had a consistent tool that we could leverage across schools. Um, so this will be a little bit of a learning curve for some of us, there are other schools that have made their own screeners.
There's a sit with the exception of conditions for learning, which we.
But I would argue that's, but, right, well, data, but that's not a screener, right? Conditions for learning is another piece of it, which I would also argue, like, youth risk behavior survey is another data.
Sure, but it's not consistently across the board.
Right, right, so just when we're thinking about consistency across the board as it relates to S E L competencies that we need our kids to have. To be able to successfully navigate school and beyond, um, this will be one of our first go rounds as a district. You know, we've had a range of different things and schools have used or created their own screeners to get at. The S E L competencies, but this will be the first approach that we can use for consistency across all of our schools.
We've reinvested in responsive classroom again?
We are beginning, yeah.
Would, would you say that that's being implemented with more fidelity? And would you say that that's being implemented at all of our elementary schools or?
I think, I would say that there are pockets of responsive classroom that are in place across all of our schools. As we begin to retrain and train folks in responsive classroom. The short answer is yes, for the folks that have just recently received the training, which. It has been ru- roughly about two hundred staff across the district, we've had five sessions, Fonsica is currently in session. We had hosted four throughout the summer, um, and so in those classrooms, principals have noted. Um, that responsive classroom practices are coming alive, morning meeting is a common expectation in all of our classrooms. Um, but for some folks, that's the only training of responsive classroom they've received. Um, I will tell you, we are working to put together a district team of folks that are actively utilizing. And what we'll call masters in responsive classroom, so that we can put together a Fall River training of responsive classroom. Pulling out the most important components of it, so that we can create our own train the trainer model in house. Um, we do have some folks that have been trained in the one and the two, we might be coming forward to get a few additional folks trained up. So that they can become the master trainers in the same way that we've created master trainers in E L A. Master trainers on the math side of the house, so that to your point, uh, Sarah, that. We can get to a place where we can have more control over training up more folks and being prepared for staff turnover. So that we're not relying on responsive classroom to train all of our new teachers as they come on board, so. We are trying to create, you know, an annual approach to this, but train the trainer model is the way that we're gonna try to go with our own experts in district. Because we also feel, you know, promoting from within and having folks that work with our kids. They'll be able to take that training and really tailor it to what we've experienced here in the city.
And it's a, it's a comprehensive training, right?
Yeah.
Four day training where we really have to work through logistics of figuring out how, like, for Fonsica. We're re- releasing those people, pushing coverage in there, you can't do that system wide, so. Yeah, we have to work through some of those logistics on how to get every school trained up, so that um, uh, it it's implemented consistently across the year.
Yeah, I'm not asking for just the gain as to why everyone's not, I'm I'm truly just asking how many, how many more folks are left? To be trained in responsive classroom, and then how do we make sure that folks coming through the door are trained when they come through the door? So, you know, I I've told many people, and I will say it publicly, that my daughter's favorite part of school is morning meeting. Her absolute favorite part, she gets so excited, she has it in her head, what she wants to talk about, and it is genuinely her favorite part of the day.
It's culture changing, morning meetings is culture changing.
Hundred percent, and folks have done a nice job at her school about it, they've consistently done that. Um, but it is genuinely her favorite part of the day. And for a second grader, that's important.
I just have two requests, uh, one would be for Ms. Costa, a one pager for the committee on the advisory, I mean, we mentioned in passing. Data, how my, how's work and whatever, cuz we had had a full meeting on that last year, you'll just advise us on what's happening with advisory. And then um, another piece is the substance prevention use, we always keep saying this, and it builds in within health, but also here. So I think that's a piece that we need to put on the. The front burner as far as those programs that were, I would say that's probably even more important than the things we just talked about, as important as those are. I think the substance use part is is important, so if we get a one pager to the committee, that would be great. And is this on the agenda to just information?
No, just information, yeah.
Just information, all the questions? Let me move on to three oh three, uh, five oh four policy procedures across the district. Is this a discussion? Just a conversation, it's not on anything in writing?
Um, so I had. So I had shared with you this um, principal meeting, so one of um, one of my initial steps in in leading the work. Was really to take a look at the inconsistency in expectations as it relates to who owns what. Um, five oh four plans, bullying coordinators, buyback, credit recovery. Um, if we think about where we've been historically prior, you know, we can kinda work down the lane, right? When we look at um, the five oh four plan work, that has been historically very inconsistent across the school department. Um, in elementary, where there are no guidance counselors, it has always been between vice principals. And or adjustment counselors owning the work. Um, when we get to the secondary level, it was very inconsistent between guidance counselors, adjustment counselors. And even in some cases, vice principals being involved in five oh four plans. When you'll notice um, in the PowerPoint that I shared. Um, the data specifically, as it relates to the types of five oh fours in Fall River. Um, anxiety, A D H D, mental health, physical or medical, and then learning dis- disabled. Those are the categories with which we find all of the majority of, if not all of our five oh four plans. And so knowing that the training that our adjustment counselors come into the work with, it felt and and continues to feel. As though and that that lives in the world of the adjustment counselors and their expertise and training. When we look at, and also putting work in lanes, so everybody can be held accountable. Another part of this was the bullying coordinators, where historically, our adjustment counselors in the district. When we read the law around bullying and knowing what a bullying investigation takes. Making phone calls to families and to letting families know your child is being investigated for bullying and all of the subsequent details that come with it. Feels and has felt much more vice principal like, when you read the law, it speaks to the principles designee. Which, after speaking with principals in July, that really lives in the vice principal world, not with adjustment counselors. Who might, what, because again, keeping in mind, a bullying investigation might yield consequences and discipline. And that should not be coming from an adjustment counselor, that is vice principal work, right? When we think about even where we have grown with our guidance counselors, guidance counselors at the secondary levels. Are responsible for the attendance buyback, so they track the attendance buyback to the D four policy. In addition to that, since covid, we have increased our credit recovery programming. So we no longer wait until halfway through the year, and we no longer wait until the end of the school year to help kids recover their grades. So that has put much more work as it relates to tracking, monitoring, and working with kids. For them to grade recover on a term by term basis. So when we look K to twelve, where our resources are, our Sacks are now owning the five oh four work. And we've leveraged this language around ownership and support, because none of these things are happening in isolation. So the adjustment counselors initiate the five oh four work, they review the plans. And they ensure that the plans get updated through our student information system. We have shifted the bullying coordinators.
Wait, what did you, you just said the guidance counselors?
Sacks, adjustment counselors.
Did I, did I hear that right?
I think you said Sacks.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I heard guidance counselors, I was like, wait a second.
So the adjustment counselors are leading the work, are owning the work. As it relates to writing five oh fours, monitoring my five oh fours and communicating out, making sure that they are live. In X two, our student information system. The vice principals are now the bullying coordinators. And they are taking the lead of when a bullying investigation is needed to be started, they own the initiation of that work. And then, because we know we need to, we need to respond to a bullying investigation immediately, it really becomes. The full team that's wrapped around that student to get to the bottom of what is going on. So investigations are shared across all the support staff connected to that student, because we need to get an outcome in a timely manner. However, the vice principals are responsible for initiating the paperwork and navigating with families and setting up the team. To come to a resolution as quickly as possible. And guidance counselors are owning the buyback, working with kids, working with attendance monitors. To make sure that they know who is in buyback, when the first day is, when the fifth day is, and then documenting as necessary. In addition to monitoring the credit recovery. So, there was a little bit of, let's just say, shock value in August when we came together at the Admin Institute. Because this is where we announced these role shifts. Um, we have since been in ongoing communication, and as a matter of fact, we just met Friday with the F R A A. And had a very positive meeting, uh, where they shared some questions as it relates to ownership versus support. Um, and we actually had a really awesome meeting, to be honest with you. Um, and so we will be sharing out the clarity of all of these roles, because there were some great questions that came up from the folks boots on the ground. That helped uh, me and my team really just put pen to paper as it relates to clarifying some of the ownership versus support language. That helped uh me and my team really just put pen to paper as it relates to clarifying some of the ownership versus support language. Um, and then working with principals to see it through, so we. So that really is kind of where things are, so really just trying to clean up the expectations across duties from K to twelve. Um and making sure that folks in the same job titles are doing consistent work as it relates to these three buckets. Um so as much as it's a five oh four presentation, I just felt it was important that the committee understand the other parts of the work that were adjusted. Um when we made some of these changes of ownership in the work, all with which lives in the lanes of all folks involved, SACS, vice principals and guidance counselors.
Questions? Please, Alex.
So we've had this conversation before and it's really not just about five oh fours, it's about duties in general, because one of the things. That's in here, some of the language says because of the investments in our SEL staff, right? The investments in SEL staff really comes from the acuity levels of our kids, so I want to be careful about not taking. The extra the extra staffing that we've put in place and make the assumption that because we have extra staff. That means they can have extra duties.
No, we can clarify roles better because of that.
We can clarify roles better, no, and I'm not, I'm not saying that you can't do that. I want to be extra extra careful about that. Because we do have the highest acuity level, psychiatric acuity level in the entire southeast region. And so if SACS can't get in front of our kids, I worry what that looks like. And we've had this discussion before, what that looks like in terms of mental health, right? So we heard from kids on Thursday at the forum and the kids were talking about how. They were really struggling mental health wise, right? And I want to make sure, and I'm not suggesting that no one's doing that. So I I don't want this heard as Sarah's saying that our SACS are not in front of kids. I want to continuously make sure that we're checking in with people. To ensure that they are getting in front of kids, that they have the time to do that, that they're not missing those quieter kids. Who maybe are seeking out the adjustment counselor, but maybe the adjustment counselor was busy doing some other duty. That maybe they're not used to doing or they haven't had time for before and they haven't had time to check in with this kid. Because that's always gonna be my priority. Are the SACS having time to get in front of our kids? We don't have parity in terms of SEL liaisons in every school. So in some schools, there are one to one match and in other schools, they're not. And so some schools, they're able to use those really well to triage and other schools, not so much. So until those things are sorted and discussed around.
But I just want to point out, every principal.
Yep.
Has had the opportunity to have that parity.
They have.
We have made it very clear, we have asked, and some prin- principals have opted not to, because they don't feel that that's where their need is. In in order to, so like, we. That was that was a a hu- huge investment. It was a very good investment. It's yeah, I agree, there's there's uh an incredible level of need, but um. Fair's not equal, you know that, right?
And I'm not attacking anyone, right?
No, no, we're not seeing that as that, but I just want, people are out there listening, right? I I want people to to know that, yes, it's not a a perfect match for every single school, so. Uh the middle school has four SACS, so the middle school has four SEL liaisons. That might be true. But you might have an elementary school that has two SACS and they may have opted for uh an SEL liaison. And they might like a Fonsica, they have an SEL liaison, they have a behavior therapist that was al- already there and they opted to stay, so. I just want to make sure that principals and the staff are are staffing their buildings according to the needs of their buildings and according to what. Because we, the the committee has been very good about, we haven't said no to people. We haven't said no to people.
Very clear, nope, very clear.
And also when I, just to clarify to the statement around, we made the investment. So where that where the behind the scenes thought around that also came is because we have more adjustment counselors that are skilled. In this background, it's gonna reduce the caseload because of the numbers that we have, right? When we did not have as many adjustment counselors, to your point, if we did increase five oh four plans, that would take people off the floor. However, because the adjustment counselors, as compared to guidance counselors, are in larger number. When and because adjustment counselors at the elementary were already knee deep in this work. It was a way to make sure K to twelve, the adjustment counselors owned the work, and when we looked at the numbers based on. The number, the number of counselors to the number of plans, it was not an inordinate amount. And if and when it was a lot sided amount, principals, as always, have the discretion to set the systems within their building. So if one adjustment counselor happened to have thirty, because of the caseload that they had as an example. The principal has the discretion to shift that caseload so that nobody is inundated with all of those plans.
Do we ever get numbers about how many kids have? I feel like you asked that at one point.
Yeah, we got four, how many had services in there, IEPs, SEL services.
Crazy.
A long time, yeah, crazy, a long time ago we gave, we couldn't certainly do that up again.
Yeah, they they use it um conveniently when it's, uh I shouldn't say conveniently, but yeah, conveniently. So when the argument comes in to say, they're conveniently gonna use this data to say, I have X amount of things in my schedule, so I need an extra SAC. We have meetings where that happens. Which is why I have a problem with a principal or superintendent or whoever coming to us and say, well, the principal didn't ask for it. Well, I've been in meetings in public where I've asked all of the principals straight out. The document that I had, everybody create that says how many SACS there are. Does this get shared in a meeting with all the principals? And the answer was no, not from you, from prior superintendent. And I was like, why not? Because everybody should say at a basic level, we need a SAC, but we also need people to be able to do the triage work. And at that point, it should be their decision, because what happens when you do it that way, it's about a person. So I don't want to say, I like Kyle, he works for me for ten years. It's about the kids.
Or Kyle's really skilled.
So like, he might do something that's beneficial, I love the guy, I want him in my building. So I have to make a value judgment between Kyle or Shelley, but Shelley's more suited for the SEL. So you guys need to step in to be able to say, in my opinion, at a minimum, we need to follow them. We've had those. Uh one school comes and says, I have a vice principal for each grade, so I need the same as her, because she's got three and I got three. Like, so and we listen. And so it doesn't really fly as well when we say the principals didn't ask for it. Principals don't come and ask for everything that they truly need sometimes. And I've had this happen where I've asked people right in a public meeting and they go, I didn't know. If I knew we were gonna get that, I would have asked one of those too.
You listening?
And fair is not always equal.
Okay, take your notes.
And I agree that fair is not always equal, so just because school A has a one to one ratio of SACS and SEL liaisons. Doesn't mean that school B needs that, because school B may have a behavior therapist that they've had in there for a long time. So they may not need another SEL liaison, but the point is they they also have another person that's helping to triage some of those issues, right? So I would argue that SEL has not, until the last couple of years, has not been a priority in this district. And so some of our folks really aren't on board with making sure that we're addressing the SEL needs of our community. And let's face it, SEL's kind of become a dirty word out in the community, not so much ours, but nationally, right? It's become this hot topic and our kids need that support. And so if we're gonna provide that support, we've got to be able to do it, and that part of that means that making sure that SACS have time to get in front of our kids. Again, not saying that they can't, but it's ensuring that all of these systems are in place to make sure that they can. The other question I have is, what support do we have for SACS when they're writing medical five oh fours? I have a kid with hearing loss.
The nurse would be at the same.
So right, and so I want to be clear too, right? The SACS are not writing these plans in isolation. They build a team, so if it's a medical five oh four, the nurse gets looped in if.
Related providers.
Right, any related providers could also be part of those meetings. If it's ne- if it makes sense that the guidance counselor is looped in, guidance counselors are looped into the meeting, they just don't own the work. Right? So keeping in mind, we're not saying at all that there's anybody left out of the work, but the difference between owning the work and seeing the work through. Um, that was how this all came to be, to put the work in people's lane so that there was consistency. Within the job titles that we have K to twelve. Because as we know, particularly the guidance counselors, they don't exist in elementary. And there was a lot of overlapping with guidance counselors and their job duties have changed. Since we have gone to a new approach to credit recovery, more specifically. Because that alone is just much more time consuming for the guidance counselors, because we are doing it on a term to term basis. And not just end of year or in April before we finish a school year, just to try to save kids before the end. Um we've really revamped that, um to hold kids accountable term to term, so we don't find as many kids. Um in the negative.
So just on the the medical moment, the learning disability component and and to an extent, the ADHD executive functioning piece, right? So Shelley's got experience as a school nurse. So Shelley comes to a meeting and where I'm the school adjustment counselor, Shelley's the school nurse, we're sitting at a meeting, we've got the family there. Ideally, because sometimes these meetings happen without the family present, because a five oh four is run differently than an IEP.
Look at the parent.
And they have to be there.
The parent has to be there.
They have to be there for a five oh four. For the initial meeting, but typically th- they will get updated sometimes without the parent present. That happens sometimes. So we're sitting down, we're going over these accommodations, right, and we're writing them out. And then Shelley says, okay, yep, they need this combination, this combination, this combination. Shelley leaves and I go to write it and I'm confused. Right? Which accommodations do I put in? I've heard people say before, it's just a checkbox, it shouldn't be that difficult. But if I'm the social worker and I have no experience in those medical things, there's a possibility I'm putting some stuff on that five oh four plan that make absolutely zero sense. So I want to make sure, again, that SACS have the support that they need. Not saying they shouldn't do it, but they have the support that they need, that it's built in, that the school nurse who's helping to write that, that the special ed teacher. Who maybe they need to consult with in order to write a plan for a student with some learning disabilities or. You know, a plan for executive functioning, they have the support they need to be able to do that, because SAC might not have that skill set.
They wouldn't be, and I I would say from my experience, and they wouldn't be writing that in isolation, uh it's a team approach. And uh I would say nine out of ten times, when a child doesn't qualify for special ed services, that that team. People from that team will support on creating that five oh four, they're at the table too, so it's not. Everybody, everybody has an opportunity to to support writing a plan that sur- that supports that child.
As well as Drew Woodward, who leads the dir- as the director of counseling, has led training, has already met with our SACS. Two times this year to offer up training. Claudia is also available to help support. Um, building based teams between vice principals, again, guidance counselors and nursing staff. So we certainly have an insulated group to help support, the bodies are there. Um and regular, you know, follow up and attention to the work is our top deal. Um and I I do believe folks know that, I have not received any reports from folks or even as a principal, did I ever feel that I didn't have the resources? To be able to pull a team together, to be able to write a plan that meets the needs of kids. Um and to the superintendent's point, oftentimes, some of these come, the ones particularly that you described, come as a result of a student not qualifying.
Right, well, so the the SEL mental health ones are a little bit different, that's within their wheelhouse, you know, that feels different. But the other ones feel, you know, if I'm the school as a social worker, I'm looking at the medical ones going. I don't know what to put in there for accommodations for a kid with hearing loss.
So we wouldn't let the SAC do that without the extra testing, the right people.
And that's what I'm asking for, like, what are the mechanisms?
I think there's a policy in protocol could be physical and mental, so I service many of these myself at school.
What are the mechanisms?
Yeah, exactly.
And I'm the principal and I do the five oh four, so. Many larger numbers than what we have here, but if she's the nurse, we'll have a meeting, we have a meeting with the parent. I sometimes forget what they wrote, but but I'll do a draft, send the draft to the nurse to say, does this look what like what we've all talked about? So I get a second pair of eyes under that category before I actually implement it and send it home for the parent for signature, so. I think a policy that says, because you have it divided out like this, at a minimum, the one that says physical, medical. We should have something that says the nurse sign off, so that tells them, it informs them that the nurse needs to check it before it goes to the official.
Well, I would argue that there probably should be a second sign off on all of them at that point, because if you're looking at. If if you're talking about a team approach, then there should be at least two people on that team, school based folks.
I think the SACS aren't gonna be the one signing, the principal or the liaison, so I think they'd be doing the work, is what I'm hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And the principal or vice, probably the house.
Vice principal.
Person would sign it.
Medical or not, the nurse.
But I would say have at least a sign off of the, whether it's on the document or just the in informally with an email. There's so and so, this is what we came up with at the meeting, please let me know if there was anything that I missed. She writes back an email and says, nope, solid. Then I'll, I feel more comfortable as a principal signing that home to the parent. Uh I do the same thing with a teacher, to give them a chance again, did I take the notes right, did I make sure? Um, but I think the. Maybe in your procedural manual or something that I I'll take it like the principal signing, the SACS entering it, but the principal signs it. And the medical one, I think is a good point to at least have a check.
And the medical one, many times is accompanied by a doctor's note, recommendation, doctor's recommendation. Sometime, and there's ranges, right? Because you can have a medical five oh four for a student who broke their arm. And is gonna need assistance for, you know, a chunk of time or whatever. And then you have some uh other medical conditions, but a lot of times, the medical um ones. Are also accompanied by a doctor's note with a recommendation for a five oh four.
Right, so again, not arguing that they're doing this work, my argument is that they have the supports they need to do this work well, efficiently. And that, you know, they're doing it right, because as a social worker, I would have no idea how to make sure this is. And I would I would want a procedure to say, alright, so I wrote this medical five oh four, it's for this kid with S O P. How does this, who do I now give this to to make sure that I did the right thing here, because I would have no clue.
Want to weigh in?
Uh, sorry, my back's too.
That's okay, um, any medical five oh four should not be happening without a nurse person to invite it at as well either. A lot of times when they're writing the five oh fours, they're writing right into the document at that time. As well too, and sometimes they're even having a final paper in front of them before they even leave. Where everyone gets to look at it as well too, so I I don't know. I'd be shocked if any medical five oh four is ever happening without a nurse being present or weighing in on it at any point.
And I'm not saying that they wouldn't be, I'm just, again, turning around and advocating that if they're taking this piece on, this is a new piece for them. And I'm just advocating that they have the supports they need to make sure that they can do this piece well, so inefficiently, so they can just get in front of kids.
And I I would say that it's not new to them, it's new that they are the owner of it. But it's they've been, they've been part of um writing five oh fours. We will put a standard operating procedure with all the the with the process, who should be at the table, uh all of that, we'll put one together.
I think that might already exist in place for any medical five oh four that a nurse be present on it.
Based on the training that we put together, so I think pulling off of the training to create an SOP would would be, because we do have a pretty extensive training.
I mean, I've never been, I've never worked as a school nurse where a five oh four went past me that as a nurse, I wasn't the one essentially mostly writing it. Depending on what it was, but mostly writing the five oh four.
But a shift in procedure, that's where I go, okay, let's make sure that these things are.
Yes, but the nurse was, just to be clear though, the nurse never was the one writing, they would always be the one, whether it was, no matter who was initiating the work, right? They were a participant in the group, in the in the team. They were not the owner of the work ever in this district. It's always been either the SAC or the guidance counselor in most cases. And in some, a vice principal at the elementary level more specifically. Um based on the homework I did and and feedback that I got in the summer going into this shift.
I've been in other districts though, Shelley, where the nurse was responsible for it, not this one, but.
No, I wasn't. I wasn't responsible, it always had to be signed off, the two schools I worked at, the principal had to sign it off. But I essentially did the writing, because if we're talking about a kid with diabetes, what is, I mean, less, well, you actually would be able to do that. Bad example, but you know what I mean, um so yeah, obviously in that prop, but never, it was, I never owned that.
No, but you did the right, you like, you essentially wrote it, right?
Right, right, because you're right, I mean, if your if your education is here, you're not, what? I'm I'm not responsible for that, I have no idea, right?
And I don't, I don't wanna be, because no one knows that you put them in there.
Right, it's not my, right, it's not my thing, yeah, absolutely.
Zero sentencing could be harmful.
Right.
I just have a few questions, so our se- our school adjustment council is still doing lunch duty?
I would say uh in some places, yes, absolutely.
So I'd like to get a full report on that, because that's been a ongoing battle of mine.
Still doing what?
Lunch duty.
All lunch duty.
And it just, with the money that we've spent on other support staff and different types of things and it it defies logic that they're still doing that.
Consistently or?
I would, I wouldn't say it defies logic, because it's a staffing issue, right? So if if you're, um depending on the school, if you're short, you're short, every, it's all the ends on deck, we we're all gonna do it.
I would say it does defy logic in that if we didn't have any more money, fine, I would say.
It's the bodies.
Uh it regardless, so over the last four years, we've spent over fifty million dollars in an operating budget. We've added hundreds of staff, so if the premise four years ago was, we don't want our school adjustment counselors doing lunch duty. Separate from an emergency, which is not the case, I'm sure that they're doing it on a regular basis at certain schools. If we spent fifty million and we still have that, it's a problem, that's where I'm getting at, so. I think it needs to come from administration that says, no, we're not doing it, don't put them in there, don't assign them to a lunch duty. You have other support staff that we've added, and if you need more support staff, then come to the committee and say, this is what we need in order to do. The counseling, this is what we have, I just think it's.
Yeah, I mean, I and I I agree with you in that uh support staff, it's getting the support staff, having it it. It's a struggle getting people to, you know, we have to hire support staff to do that work. Everybody wants, you know, we hired SEL liaisons and then you're gonna say, they don't belong doing lunch duties, we have pairs that belong in classrooms. If we're gonna pull them out to do lunch duty, you're gonna leave those classrooms short. So unless we're gonna say, in every single building, we're gonna hire people that are solely dedicated to do lunch duty and they're gonna go from building, I don't know. But it, we've tried that too. But it, we've tried that too, hire people for a block of time, and lunch.
Also, I think also too, right, I think there's a blend of it all, because I can promise you this, as a principal, I learned the most about my kids in lunch duty. When I can be present and flow among my kids, and sit at the table with my kids, and observe the peer relations among my kids. You get a lot of skinny at lunch duty, right? And so, I think it's really important that we go and ask principals how, and just so you know, one of some of the work that Claudia and I are doing right now. Is really trying to get a scope of what are the daily schedules like for our support staff? To exactly get at what you're describing, right, I wanna be able to report out to the committee, how many S E L small groups are we running? How many students are receiving grid C services on their I E Ps? How much time is being chunked out by other duties from our Saks? Um, same thing with guidance counselors, what does the scope of their day in the year look like? Um, and so we're look, I'm, I'm looking to collect that data and put it together, obviously knowing that, you know, our support staff, as much as they've got schedules. The minute anything goes wrong for kids, it, it throws off their schedule, but I think there is a way that we can get a handle on how much time. Um, is being spent in some of these duties, so, again, I'm not saying it's all bad, but if it's an enormous, if it's a large chunk of time.
I would differentiate between being present at lunch duty, being present at lunch is one thing, and doing lunch duty is a totally separate thing. So I think what we do here is we assign them to lunch duty, like they're responsible to manage their room. So if I'm a present, and I'm a counselor or a principal or whoever, and I'm present, but I'm not on duty. And I see these two having a little issue, whatever, I can sit in between them, have a conversation, and I don't have to be watching everybody else. What I think we he- we do here is, we say, you're on duty, so now I'm supposed to be watching everything, and you can't do both.
But nobody is in isolation on duty. I think mo- mo- in most cases, in our secondary schools specifically, there are more than one person who is on lunch duty. So it does give the flexibility for folks to be able to man- meander within the groups of kids. So I don't disagree at all, you know.
The data will show us.
Yeah, right.
What it says in each, each building, how many people you have, what they do, so. The other thing is the, um, we talked about the high school with the school adjustment, being more guidance counselors than school adjustment counselors. And I think we need to get the data on that as well.
The, the number of guidance counselors versus the number of Saks.
Looking at some of the thing, it, it's always been the case that there's double the amount of guidance counselors.
If you go into, if you go into the handout that I shared with you, and I can certainly reshare it, but this link right here. Which I can share with you guys, it cl- it spells it out, at the secondary level, uh, actually, as a matter of fact, there's on average. There are six administrators, um, S E L staffing increases per school, because I had it all tracked out, so I can share that link with you guys.
I'm only saying this, so when we, I think where we've gone in this district was, we used to have double the amount of guidance counselors as, um, adjustment counselors. And over the years, we've added a few, uh, guidance counselors, and we've added four times as many. Adjustment counselors, and I think that's historical for the committee to get, to understand that it's no longer the case where we had this, so in the old days. If I'm, uh, if I had this ten guidance counselors and only three Saks. Those guidance counselors had to take a lot of SAC duties, because there's no way that three people could run twenty four hundred shifts.
Correct.
That was the old days, now we've shifted to be equal, but I'm not so sure that we have, and I don't know this, that's for you guys to figure out. Whether we've now shifted to say, what are the guidance counselors gonna do in addition? Because now that there's tw- twelve Saks, and they were doing, you know, S E L staff work, putting out fires, what are they doing now different? And I asked questions at one of the last meetings, we had a lady does, uh, uh, seniors, you know, whatever we talked about. I said, what are the senior guidance counselors do? I don't know, valid questions though, as we're saying, there's equal amount of school adjustment counselors to guidance counselors, that's all, so.
There isn't.
There isn't. It's not equal, it's not equal, it's not equal.
I'll, I'll share the data, that's what, that's what drove, just so you know, that's exactly what drove the whole putting things in lanes. Because so much was living on the world of guidance, the college, and nothing for nothing, our college and career access. Is not where it needs to be either at the high school, so when we think about exploratory and getting kids connected to jobs and careers and internships. Yes, we're growing early college, but how about everybody in between, right? So, I would argue, there is a ton of work that we still need to do as it relates to getting kids connected to all sorts of post-secondary experiences. Through our guidance counselors and, and networking, um, so, yes, we can certainly share with you the numbers.
How many Saks are at the high school?
Eleven.
How many?
Eleven.
And how many guidance counselors?
I, I don't know the number of guidance counselors.
Twelve, I believe, twelve.
Are you counting twelve with, uh, with Drew, or?
No, no, it was always, we had, we always had eight, then we had nine, then we had one specifically for the, uh, S E B T E. Then we had one for the E L L, then we have a SAC for the E L L, so right now, we are, the way I'm looking at it budgetarily, like, it's eleven and twelve. Thirteen and eleven, it's, it's.
Well, we'll pull it by, by school, the secondary schools, yeah, we'll do it by school.
So, the other piece that I would request is a per school S E L staff. Analysis, so when you, when you look at the.
Talking about S E L liaison, staff.
So when we had that chart, a chart of all the people, we had one also, that prior superintendent did not wanna give to people, that said. All S E L type of individuals, so if you've got a SAC, but I don't, I have a student support coordinator, they would be linked into the same type of number. And when you look at that data and add those people up, you're gonna have a less than one hundred per one caseload. At the high school at least, and I know there's needs up there. When you add up that, all of those folks, it's probably closer to seventy five to one of, uh. So, you get the idea of the, the whole, the whole piece, so. I do think that that's, uh, getting more data is never a ba- a bad thing for us, uh. Update only, so we don't need to discuss anymore anything further, new business, anybody? Thank you all for coming, we need a motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Seconded, roll call?
Mr. Roger?
Yes.
Ms. Carrera. Yes, Mr. Roger.
Yes.
Motion and, uh, the meeting is adjourned.